All right, I'm calling this meeting to order. Everybody will please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty gracious God, we do give you thanks that we can gather together to connect the business of the city and hear from residents and address concerns. And Lord, we are with us, you're watching over us, and we do praise you for that. So be with us tonight and guide our conversations and guide our votes. It's in your son's name we pray, and our God's people say it.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing on the agenda is Becky Smith Shea has some questions for us.
Yes, I think when you first took over office, we talked about annexation of...
Can you come up here? If I can, my hearing is really bad.
I said you had, when you first took over office, we talked about maybe getting some annexations of some of the bigger areas here in town, or just talking about like Valley Village and things of that nature that would bring a little bit more revenue for our city as far as taxes go. So I had a couple of questions on that. So what does the city provide to the residents of Forsyth through our city limits?
Okay, so we provide water, sewer, trash removal service, street maintenance, police and fire services, and building inspections. And so Shoals Bend subdivisions, and I have each person that is responsible for these questions that you had answer them, so I'm reading them off for you. In the Shoals Bend subdivisions, the city cannot provide water service because it is in the Taney County Water District Number Two exclusive district. And so that's what they promote.
I didn't have any idea about that when I sent you these. I had no idea anything about Shoals Bend. I mean, I had some, I had some information on Shoals Bend because when Dave Oliphant was the mayor, I knew a lot of things that were going on at the time because I had talked to him about the Shoals Bend situation and when it was, because he was wanting to build several things out there, and the booth, the bank there, and we, I guess they were going to charter with the school up there as well at one time.
We looked in several places for additional school space, and that, up in that area was one, there were three or four places.
There were several, I knew that there were several things that were looked at between Taney Courthouse, I think, or the judicial building, I guess, was, they were thinking about putting that up there at one time as well.
That was, again, several options they were looking at.
What, I guess what I'm getting at is we were, annexation of land or annexation of a community, they have to be able to provide them with water, and I did not, I knew that they didn't have water up there, I knew they didn't have sewer, and they couldn't give it to them. But when I'm talking about like if we decide to annex Value Village, just Temperline Estate, is it, is it in city limits? Okay. Is, so Skyline Hills is in city limits?
Part of it, yeah.
Part of it. Coe Boulevard, some of it is, but not all of it is. So like, okay, now, and I don't, I mean, in disrespect to you at all, but I noticed that when they did the annexation, they went around Larry's property, but the ambulance station and then the entire strip mall is, that's in Forsyth City Limits, but not Larry's. Why, why would that have taken place?
That was 20 years ago, for one thing.
I believe, I believe all the annexations we've done are what's called voluntary annexations. Where we, we've never forced an annexation on anyone. It's always been voluntary and voted in by both the residents of the area to be annexed and the city.
And I think Value View had been approached before on that, but they chose not to.
I knew that, I think they're county water now, if I'm not mistaken, I think they went, because it used to be, Dave Oliphant used to own the well in that, in that subdivision. I know that the annexation of Shoals Bend, if I recall right, and I might be wrong, they brought that in trying to, because I lived in city limits back then, they brought that to city limits twice, to, or to the vote of people twice, and it didn't pass. You weren't in here, but Cheryl was. Was that true?
Well, the first time that that was looking at being annexed, that was the situation where they were looking at moving the Judicial Center up there. If the Judicial Center would have moved up there, it would have been the devastation of Forsyth as we know it. And that's why that did not pass.
Why, why is that? Why would that be a devastation?
Because when you look at the businesses that are associated with the courthouse, you have attorneys offices, you have bail bond, you have people that do restaurants when they're going to court or in court business. And so all of that type of revenue and business for the city of Forsyth would have moved, and basically the town would be moving up there and Forsyth would not be as we know it today.
Well, I gotta say that being a business owner for 32 years in Forsyth, there's been a bigger problem with them just letting inmates out during crazy hours of the evening. Dentisite talked about that on several occasions. So people just kind of wandered the streets at night, so they wasn't letting out on the streets. And I tend to disagree with the relation of Forsyth, just because it would have put them away, farther away from our school, but it put the inmates farther away from, I mean, you know, residential, but there's not, there wasn't hardly any residential there at the time. So I, I wish they would have put it up there. I know that, I have talked to a couple of people, and they said they were looking at several different options, as Jack said. So Value View Village, like if they ever wanted to annex Value View Village into Forsyth, it would be, have to be a vote across the city to do so?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me see what else I got.
There's just another factor in why Shoals Bend was not annexed the first time. There was a proposed golf course that would be placed in that area, and the city would have, became the ultimate owner of that. And when the numbers were run and for the amount that the golf course would have cost the city to have purchased, the revenue would not even have paid for the debt service on that.
Let me ask you, um, did Forsyth own the property after they annexed it or before they annexed it?
Well, there were parts of property that Forsyth owned that they didn't own all of.
How much of it did they...
Well, they owned some park land, which we have a park at now.
70 acres? Is that, that's what they own now, but did they own, did they own more than that at the time? Because see, I, if I remember resolutely right, I thought it was like 200 acres up there.
No, Forsyth never owned that much property up there.
Well, so they owned 70 acres up there, and they purchased that when?
That was purchased, if I'm not mistaken, in '03. I think that was May of '03.
That's what I was thinking too, because they built the judicial building in '08, if I recall. So I, I was under the impression, just because I, Dave was my landlord for 18 years, I was under the impression that they bought that property too, because they couldn't put the judicial building there unless we owned that city property. So that's what I thought, that I, I mean, I might be wrong.
Well, the Judicial Center was not going to be placed on the city-owned property. The Judicial Center was not going to be placed on the city-owned property. It was going to be placed on property that was owned by Steve Redford at the time in his organization.
And Forsyth bought it from Steve Redford?
They bought what they did buy from, but they did not buy the area that was proposed for the courthouse.
Okay. Well, I wasn't for sure on that. So I guess, I feel that we don't have any business owners that have a say in our, in our city. I've came on several different occasions to discuss things, and it's been, there have been problems with, between me and Chris, there have been problems between the police department and myself, and I can't seem to come across to have a conversation with anybody on the board. Not sure what the bill is. I, I gotta say that I have lost my temper on a couple of different occasions, but not verbally, not, not anything more than we need to sit down and have a talk because this is getting out of control kind of stuff. I feel like the only thing that we could do is, like Dennis did, if you want to have a voice, you need to try and see if you can run for office. Now, we don't have a representative on the board at all. He is a business owner. And so I want to propose that we have a person who represents the business aspect of Forsyth. I know that, I called up to get the trash service that they renegotiated for Forsyth. It was a 3% hike in our, in our payments, which is fine, but the businesses are not included in that. So I think that we, I would like to see the city vote for a position of making a fifth council member. Nobody gets paid for it, it wasn't due anything, but just kind of give the input of what businesses would prosper.
The state doesn't allow for that. In fourth-class cities, it's all residential, and who, on the residents, and the amount of residents in each ward. And our current, we're waiting still for our numbers to see whether lines need to still be redrawn for the population, you know, if any population has changed in either ward and stuff. But it is just two wards.
I was, we kind of checked in on it a little bit, and I think Kansas City actually does that. If the person owns business...
Kansas City is a charter.
Yeah, it's not a fourth-class city.
It's not a fourth-class city. Well, here's what I'm gonna say to that, is I think that we can, we could consider anything we want to do in Forsyth. Seems like that's the way it works, isn't it?
And it's against state statute, and we can't consider it. And we talk about business ownership in that favor. He's been a big president for many years, so he has, he has a very good rapport with the community.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying he is a business revenue producer. He is a lending, he's a lending officer.
And he was also on the school board for a number of years, and where Lom had a business, and he was a revenue producer.
Anybody that owns a business that lives in the city can run as an individual.
Not if you don't live.
Yeah, and that's what he just said. If you live in Forsyth.
I understand the living in the city, but I have, I have, I own property right in the middle of town.
The, the state statutes govern the qualifications for people serving the board.
What does, what does it say?
Well, Kansas City is a big city, so.
Kansas City is a charter city.
What's the difference between a fourth-class city, it's all population-based? Is that what it is?
The statutes apply for Chapter 79 for fourth-class cities. Kansas City and charter cities such as Springfield, Kansas City, St. Louis can write many things that the statutes don't.
So there couldn't be a Ward One and a Ward Two at-large, at-large board where you've got...
Chapter 79 is pretty specific about two wards and two people per ward, certainly.
That are specifically residents of that ward?
Yes.
Hence, once they move out of that ward, they have to give up their position on the board?
That is correct.
So they can rewrite in an extra position?
No.
It's not possible.
Is there a possibility to have a watchdog type of position on the board of Alderman that receives the financials? I mean, granted, I know it's all pretty much public record anyway, but that can meet with the board or be in attendance at board meetings, non...
They can come to the board, too.
Right.
Anybody can come to the board what?
Needed.
I meant not necessarily, I meant not this board meeting, I meant some of the other, some of the other, some of the other...
We don't have private sessions except for the statutory procedures for litigation, personnel, stuff like that. And no, it would not be permissible in those.
Right, I understand that. Understand that.
Becky, you were referring to businesses. Dennis has been a dentist in this community for many years. He has a lot of contact with people, and he isn't a lot to deal with, you know, people in general.
I'm not just degrading at all of anybody who has a business or not business. I'm just saying that the, what I would come to the table with is because I have some skin in the game. And I'm not saying you don't have skin in the game, I'm just saying that...
My husband, my own multiple businesses, and so...
My story is what you want to say.
Well, I believe that everyone sitting here has a substantial interest in the good of the residents of the city of Forsyth. And that's why each of these first, each of these people are here. They're not here after their own personal agenda, so they are here.
I am here for mine, I am here for, for the city of Forsyth as well.
We're all here to give the best representation that we possibly can to the residents of the city of Forsyth. And we try to make good decisions to help the residents. And as I mentioned, none of these folks that are here have a personal agenda to accomplish. The only thing they desire is that good things happen for the city of Forsyth and for the residents of Forsyth.
And that's my, that's the whole purpose I'm here to. When I see things that...
Okay, I, I need to move on, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll go second.
I'm gonna go to number two, and that's you, Missy. Come on in. All right.
Happy New Year.
I haven't yet to watch the video of the December 20 meeting. I just had a couple of questions after that.
Sure.
One was regarding the fee for credit card transactions that was, I believe, increasing. I haven't had my glasses for being, I don't know where they are, sorry.
You can borrow mine.
I thought that's what I saw.
Which part?
Hip fell part, right? I think what I heard on the video was that Front Desk was charged a 3.8% fee transaction, but I didn't hear what the actual fee would be from Forte.
Okay. You want to take that, Angela, or you want me to go ahead and...
It's up to you.
Okay, no, go ahead.
I'll bet you. Front Desk is our integrated accounting software, and they only charge us for maintenance and license fees annually. Our credit card processor is a separate company, which is World Pay, and their fee ranges from 2.21% to 3.81% right now, plus some flat fees every month for, there's a fee on a fee on fee when it comes to the way they bill us. Works out, this month's bill is $472 to process 155 cards. $472 and 155 transactions. The new company is called Forte, and they are going to be charging 2.75% across the board, or $2 per transaction as a minimum fee. In the past, we've not passed that on to customers, but that is, is part of the setup for going forward, is what they decided to do.
We also, from what I've heard in the video, the e-check, they recommend passing on the cost of the credit card fee to the customer or absorb the e-check fee?
That's what they recommend, yes.
It's 50 cents for the e-check fee. I think the only thing I didn't realize on it was, I thought with the auto pay out of the, was that, I, I figured the e-check was them automatically sending a check, but the e-check is, is the debit from the, and...
We call our paychecks fake checks.
Right.
It's just a transaction at the bank.
It's an ACH.
An ACH, like we do currently through our utility billing software, which is being discontinued, which is, again, part of why we're needing the Forte situation.
Okay. So why, why absorb that 50 cents? Because, I mean, is that the, the ACH is that the online banking like I would do?
No, it's the city calling from your account.
Yeah, it's, the auto debit...
We would initiate the debit rather than you sending us money.
Have you signed up for that? Where they automatically debit out of your, okay. And so send it? See, that's what I used to do, and I thought that was the e-check, you know, that they would actually send. I didn't know the auto, the debit was charging us the 50 cents too.
It will be going forward with Forte.
Okay. So I, I get...
300 people a month use the ACH program that we currently have, and it is secure.
So we're waiving that $150 a month, basically, right? I'll face this?
Yes, as we have been the 400 and a half hundred times.
And then, I didn't know, like I, I looked around Hollister, using Forte, they directly collect the fees? They don't do anything with the city?
That's what Forte does, is a third-party service that directly collects the fees and remits it to the city.
Okay. It was just confusing though, from city to city, and looking at things.
Everybody's different.
Right. With brands, sometimes $2.99 for a credit card and the $1.50 for the e-checks. So do they charge different cities, different amounts based on volume?
Everybody, everybody charges differently based on what they're costing, just the way I get it from other finance officers.
And that was kind of the same way at Forsyth School too, when they used PayPal to go through for their, you know, we had to automatically charge a 3% service fee on that. When they went to this other company that they currently have, it's a lot, it was a lot cheaper fee, so we could actually set a set fee for those things, and, which was a lot better for the parents and everybody, you know? Nobody wants to pay more for lunches than they have to, so.
I was just trying to understand, I don't think it's...
Yeah, I get it.
Because we're different from other cities, and I... And the other area that I have a question about was the 2021 building codes. And when I asked if there was a summary of changes from the 2020 codes to 2021, just something like major changes or anything that we could put out to the public and...
Well, I think we're going to put them online, so, yeah, yeah, so...
I apologize, ma'am. The codes themselves, we don't own the codes, although we did purchase books, so we cannot put them online.
Oh, we can't, okay.
However, there is a website that any person could look at all of the ICC books. It was the website that I gave you, ma'am, and we can post that on the webpage. I'll get with Angela on that tomorrow. But the, what's online at the iccsafe.org is read-only format for free. If you want to have a searchable version, then you would have to pay for a specific year. But there is quite a bit of information, just between 2018 and 2021, there was 250 changes in the code. Some of them loosened, some of them were minor changes, some of them were fairly major changes throughout the various codebooks.
And Angela, can we put a link to that website on our website?
Yes, and would you like the old website or the new website to have the link?
This is not a blog, but Forsythmo.gov is up and running.
I apologize.
And then kind of follow-up to that was, what do the new codes mean for landlords as far as ensuring residential commercial property rentals are up to code? And I couldn't even remember, like what does the process look for the city to know that residential, residential property are up to code?
Yes, ma'am. When it comes to the actual, by the way, I apologize, I'm a little mad at you, I'm the building inspector. When it comes to overnight rentals, because I believe you're referring to things like Airbnb, for instance?
No.
No?
No, like leased houses or apartments and stuff like that.
Okay, so that does clarify, because I thought you were looking into the nightly rentals.
No.
Although my answer is gonna kind of delve into that, if that's all right with you. When it comes to rental properties, the ICC looks at, or the International Code Council looks at the usage of the building itself. Is it residential? Is it commercial and so on and so forth? So rental properties technically fall under residential code, although there are subclassifications within that, although the details for those are relatively minor, because we're still looking at the end of the day for the building to be built safely, that the plumbing is still the same, so on and so forth. So a lot of those changes are very, very minor changes between a rental property and a regular property. So an average person would very easily be able to go from a house they live in to a house that they rent. Now Airbnb is a slightly different category because it falls somewhat within the cracks of the codebooks, because it sort of applies to residential property, but it also partially applies to a commercial property as well. The co-council has actually been doing quite a few webinars on this, as well as votes, trying to figure out where to put these businesses and what burdens to put on the owner versus safety features for the renter. So right now, there's a bit of a gap there.
Does that include taxation also?
I, I haven't, I don't do anything.
So that doesn't have anything to do with it?
Yeah, that, that has nothing. What I'm looking for at the end of the day is a safe, quality building for the residents of Forsyth.
And they don't do inspect, I'm sorry. So if, if somebody goes to rent a property from somebody, is there a process for that property to have been inspected to know that it's up to code before...
Not at this current time, and part of that is, and this is my understanding, is it does get kind of into the legality of the inspections themselves, because there are clauses for grandfathering in. So to take a, an example, let's say you have a house that was built in 1965, and I come in and I'm trying to apply the 2021 codes to your house, well, next thing you know, you're gonna have to replace all of the wiring, all of the plumbing, and I could go through the list of items that would be a mile long and cost the homeowner tens of thousands, if not $100,000, to completely renovate that whole house in order to bring it up to modern code. So the codebooks do have an allowance of grandfathering in older codes with newer codes. That's why one of the books we had purchased was the existing building codes, because it, it kind of ties those in and looks for the most critical features that would need to be upgraded for a house. But that would apply whether it's your house that you bought for renting or for your own personal use.
And how, where would we see what the critical features are that you're referring to?
That would be, that would also be on that website, the iccsafe.org. There's a link to the codes that are in there that range all, and the read-only format is their entire range of codes. I think it's 1984, 1994, but it goes back to their first codebooks that they had put out, and the latest ones, which are the 2021 books that we're looking to adopt.
So if I'm understanding, like you can't expect everybody to bring a house completely up to the brand-new standards, so would that be more of a city ordinance issue then to bring a home up to, I don't know, like...
Do you have any home, any home in Forsyth?
Not buying, but renting.
Oh, no. I mean, why would it be any different for renting than it would be for buying?
Because you have to have an inspection to purchase a home if you're financing, especially, I think.
Right.
But you don't have to have an...
But there, yeah, you have an inspection, but they don't necessarily make you change your, your wiring and everything else for that, so...
Yeah, they do, yeah, they do.
I cannot enforce you unless there is a significant risk to life, limb, or eyesight. I cannot force a person with pre-existing wiring to completely replace their wiring. Now, you may have a private company that does inspections, many real estate agencies will employ private inspectors for inspections like that, and they can make recommendations, as well as I can make recommendations, but as long as your wiring actually connects correctly, it's very difficult, I cannot, I cannot force you to change your wiring.
Is that because you don't own the codes?
No, 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 it's because it creates an undue burden on the person.
You own it all?
Yes, ma'am, or purchasing a home. So if you have somebody that is very low income, where they would be able to purchase a home, but now I come in and say, this, just to pull a number out, $50,000 house, now you're gonna have to add in another $50,000 worth of changes before you can purchase.
That's why they inspect it before the person actually buys a house.
And the reason for that inspection is so that the homeowner, or the person purchasing the house, is able to go into it with their eyes wide open, knowing what are all the, what's the situation.
And I think that's what Missy's trying to say, that somebody who rents a building that is not up to... that is not up to standards, that is not safe for them, and they give them that home, and then they realize the roof's leaking, or the electricity or the heat doesn't work, or the hot water heater isn't working.
Those are things that you would talk to your landlord and get fixed, right?
You'd think.
So for people who are going into rent a house, there is no...
I am able to do a courtesy inspection.
If they request it?
Or they can get with their real estate agent, and that real estate agent usually has a private inspector.
I think we're more concerned about rental places because that's why I came two and a half years ago, almost three years ago, is because there was some people that came in and built a business in Forsyth in a building that should have been condemned, and I was told that the condemnation didn't take place because the city would have to buy that building, and vice versa. I can understand the building code kind of thing.
I was going to say, I do the best I can on trying to enforce codes for major construction.
What I'm saying is these people rented. They rented a building, and then they had to close in five months.
If you'd like...
Hey, Will, before you go.
Yes.
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Because of recent events with fires, who's responsible for putting the smoke detectors into rental property?
That would be the property owner.
It's the property owner who should make sure that all their properties have working smoke alarms? Okay, appreciate that, because of the fire in New York City recently and others across the nation, it's a major issue.
But the way the codes look at it is the same as a homeowner for your own home, you would be responsible for your smoke detectors.
Appreciate that. And I know who can help install those smoke detectors.
Yes, sir.
He's standing behind it. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to number three, second and final reading of Bill number 539.
I move that we read by title only, Bill number 539. Huh? Ann and Ed.
All right. Bill number 539, an ordinance to cancel and repeal ordinance 495 and adopt international building code 2021 edition, international residential code 2021 edition, international plumbing code 2021 edition, international mechanical code 2021 edition, international fuel gas code 2021 edition, international existing building code 2021 edition, and national electrical code 2020 edition.
Wow. Let's go back. Which second did you say?
Second. Oh.
Now you got to do a second.
I don't want to read it again. All right, sorry. I got ahead of myself. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. All right, Bill number 539.
I move approval of Bill 539. Second.
All in favor?
End to an act.
End to an act, yeah.
Aye.
So Cheryl?
Aye.
Dennis? All right. Okay, second and final reading of Bill number 540, adopt 2021 fire codes.
I move that we read by title only, Ann and Ed, Bill number 540.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance to cancel Bill number 540, an ordinance to cancel and repeal ordinance 496 and adopt the international fire code 2021 edition.
I move that we accept the second reading of Bill number 540 and to enact it.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Cheryl?
Aye.
Dennis? All right. Number five, discuss Ecode 360 Solutions, a company that offers services to put city code book online.
I have this put on the agenda for you guys to consider putting the codes on, or putting the ordinances online. We get a lot of people come to City Hall wanting copies of this code or that code, and the city staff spends a lot of time researching for those, so I think it'd be a good idea to put it online so that citizens could do their own homework, get their own bequest.
So are you talking about the link that we just talked about for that code, or are you talking about...
That's the building code. These are the ordinance.
The building code?
These are the ordinance. Yeah, you can put those online. Anybody has any questions?
I think that'd help everybody out.
I do.
So what is the difference between life standards and things? I know that in certain products, but does it?
Well, Nate, you want to explain the difference in there? He didn't do it. The giant, he did it.
I'll have to find out. Email him back, ask him what the differences are for those levels or those prices.
I suggest we table this until we find out.
Until we get more information, yeah.
Well, it was just up for discussion, but I just want to see how you guys felt about it. That way we'll bring back more information.
I think it's an excellent idea because there's been some people that, this was on Facebook, that believe this could be helpful in other communities in the area. It'd make it, and it would take time away from staff.
I'm sure this is our co-signers, but it's not like we can give anyone else. These are the people that co-sign our books in New York City for us. They take what we have with them now, but online, so they keep it up to date.
It's called a monopoly.
I mean, there's other co-signers, but okay, I'll find out.
It's like putting your inspections down the fire's lines.
Yeah, okay, I'll find out the information for next time.
Okay, number six, annual utility bad debt review and approved to write off.
You have a spreadsheet in front of you that has two and a half pages of accounts that have had no activity since January of 2019 or prior. One like that.
There is like...
And these are some that, because we do not have personal information on the account holder, so it's not possible to send it to collections. And this would clean up this $3,453.14 in uncollectible accounts.
I think several of these people have passed away many years ago, and then you can't collect from their estate because they probably didn't have them. If they did, it's closed. I believe that we go ahead and agree to write this off. It's possible city owners to get, you know, collections taken or...
May I ask you a question? Because when I talked to the, should I wait for the answer before I go back to suppression? When I talked to the state auditor this last week, and they said that 95% of these were actually rentals instead of people who passed away.
I'm sorry, how would they know?
I don't know. That's what they told me.
No, I mean, it's homeowners, it's renters, it's businesses, it's...
Renters can pass away too.
It's some of everything.
I know. I just don't get that. That's what they told me, so I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, but this is what they suggested to us.
We're still doing a catch-up on this too, because some of these date back to 2014, 2011, 2013.
Yeah, I saw Forsyth billiards. That's been gone for...
We have been charging them off on a regular basis. It was the recommendation of the auditor to do this.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
We need to keep current.
She'd always keep the auditor happy.
Most times.
She does. But I'd be hurt once, you know, if they followed the same policy.
Well, and we, these were things that we agreed to when we had the audit, was to go ahead and write these things like this off and change a few policies, and that's what we did. So we're going to continue with that.
I knew that we go ahead and...
So I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes of December 20th, 2021.
Motion to approve then to December 20th, 2021. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bills for approval.
Motion to approve bills, December the 23rd, $24,906.74. December the 20th, 2021, $979.11. January the 6th, 2022, $55,130.75.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, financial statements as of December 30th, 2021.
This month, in addition to your comparative cash balances for 2020 to 2021, you have the sheet that shows that we are meeting our minimum fund balance requirements as the resolution you have adopted on that next page, showing that you have reserves to continue to do city business and utility business if there were to be a major event of some kind that upsets city business. As I told you last month, I will be working on the budget amendment for February, and then it's probably going to be time shortly after that to really start talking about what we're, how we're going to proceed on the federal COVID money that we are receiving. As soon as the words came out of their mouth, the Department of Treasury is not going to produce a final rule, Department of Treasury produced a final rule. So now the guidelines for using the money are a little more clear.
Good.
I hope. I need to do some more reading on it and get some information from the municipality. But we'll be needing to establish a budget for that money in the next five to six months and decide how we're going to proceed with it.
Well, now that we have some guidelines, that helps.
Exactly. Yeah, it's kind of hard to do something without a rule.
Something you don't know.
Otherwise, budget-wise, how many taxes are coming in as we would expect them to do this time of year? I saw our sales tax deposit for this month, and overall, our sales tax is up about 4% for the year so far.
Angela, that sales tax is only from businesses within Forsyth city limits?
Yes, with the exception of motor vehicle sales tax. And that comes because the person lives in city limits, not because the car dealer is in city limits.
COVID actually increased our income because people stopped locals from going to Walmart through the year.
Beneficial to both business owners and to the city?
Motion to approve financial statements for 123121.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 10, approval of transfers from December 23rd, 2021 through January 6th, 2022.
Motion to approve the transfers as stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and number 11, confirm monthly audit recording sheet was received and reviewed.
Madam, I have a suggestion. I really appreciate that the auditor has said that we need to see this, but it concerns me that, how many pages did you say, Angela?
23.
23 pages multiplied by five, yeah, and I don't know who else has copies. That's a lot of papers, and it really doesn't change month to month. But what I'd like to propose is that a copy be brought to the city council meeting so that we can look at over all four of us, initial it, and say that we have reviewed it.
How about we let Cheyenne keep it at her desk, and we can come in at our available times and sit down.
But you need to do it before the council meeting.
Yeah.
How soon before the council?
How soon do you have that prepared, Angela?
I printed this one on January 4th, so the first week of the month.
So an email could go out to us, or a text could go out to us?
No, when you get your packet, you're going to know that you're going to come in, yeah.
Yeah, that gives us week.
I just, you know, I appreciate what the auditor's saying, but somewhat, it's a lot of personal information, number one, but it's nice to know that my bill is pretty much common. That was nice to know. But I think saving the paper would be really nice, and we can review it in a time of...
I have another thought as well, like, in addition to this, we come in and look at that, that maybe just this front page, front back being our packet, and the rest of it, we come in and review.
And sign off on the other? As long as you're initialing it off and signing off that you, that's what the auditor wanted, so we're going to abide by that.
And it's good advice. I think it's good.
Yes, and that's why we have auditors on here.
Yeah, you'll still have to approve it on here, but they're just saying don't pay.
As long as we get this back, and then the rest we can review because that is a lot of repetition.
So I move that we confirm the monthly audit recording sheet was reviewed, received, and reviewed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, that's it for this evening, folks.
I just appreciate the conversation and people sharing before the meeting that they had some questions that could be run, so I appreciate that very much.
I hope that everyone gets on to a good new year, that long good health, and that's so well.
I hope so. Yes, we are. Second week of, folks, and it's the second week of the month again because of the holidays. President State Ball on that Thursday, so... Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.